DVD or MP3, I'm not sure what format it'll be available in. But it actually is designed to teach anyone, anywhere in the world, how to run this project.
I see.
So our goal is to have this run worldwide, in any kind of a community, a senior center, an assisted living home, or even a private community.
Well, you have shared with me that one of the first things you learned is that don't stifle these older people. They will surprise you with what they come up with.
Yes, and I have to admit, I was inauthentic. The first time I walked into this particular community, I saw somebody walking with a walker slowly and was concerned with whether she could participate fully. And then I realized that was completely inauthentic because I was denying her any possibility at all. So I had to give that up. And what I got was that I realized they're full of possibility and they want to express themselves.
You know what I love, Brian? You're a professional photographer, so you would know the difference of these things. Now, in just a few minutes, we're going to actually have Florence sit down with us and you'll get a chance to meet a really special woman. We'll be right back with Aging Well in L.A.
Hello, I'm Dr. Scott Kaiser, board-certified family physician and specialist in geriatric medicine. Welcome to The Empowered Patient. We have a very special guest today, Fran Phillips. So now for our viewers at home, grab a pen, grab a pad of paper, because Fran's going to give us some great tips on how to make the most out of your healthcare visit, not to be afraid to get a second opinion when you need it, knowing that you're the boss in what you need to do. So get that pen and get ready to write down some great tips from Fran here and get the most out of your health, tips that could help you live longer and better. How are you doing, Fran?
Fine, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So tell me, Fran, what is it that you think seniors need to know about taking charge of their health and being more active in their healthcare?
Always go for a second opinion, sometimes a third. Some of my friends say, "Oh, you may hurt the doctor's feelings." Has nothing to do with it.
I hear that all the time. I mean, we're not talking about a car with some minor body work here. I mean, this is our health.
Well, I even go get a car opinion on cars. Certainly, I'm going to take care of myself and my husband.
Right, right. Tell us about that experience of getting a second opinion and even a third.
Well, Jerry went to a doctor and he said, "You need another angioplasty on your leg." And Jerry went to his rheumatologist, and the rheumatologist called Jerry one night and said, "I've called that doctor twice and he hasn't returned my call." And he wanted to discuss the problem with the doctor, suggested the angioplasty. And I went to see that doctor on Monday, and he said, "Well, what does he want to talk to me about?" I said, "Well, why don't you call and find out?" And I said to Jerry, "We're not going to use this doctor. You don't have to go on the anesthesia for nothing."
So when you found that this doctor was unresponsive, you were disappointed, and that brought up a red flag, that this doctor wouldn't communicate with your other doctor, wasn't responsive.
Right.
So what did you do?
I asked, "Who was the top vascular doctor in the city?" I went to see him with Jerry, and he said, "You do not need an operation."
So then you went to a second doctor, and this doctor had talked with your primary doctor, reviewed the records, went through all the information, then you sat down together and were able to make an informed decision.
Yes, and they all agreed Jerry did not need an operation.
And you were insistent on getting a second opinion.
Right.
Absolutely.
You have to do that. And if you don't, you're making a very big mistake for yourself.
So Fran, tell me, what did you get out of reading this booklet, Talking With Your Doctor?
You'll have to excuse me, but it comes with age. Summary Making Decisions With Your Doctor. Ask About Different Treatments. Are There Any Risks Associated With The Treatment? How Soon Should Treatments Start? How Long Will It Last? Are There Other Treatments Available? How Much Will The Treatment Cost? Will My Insurance Cover It? Ask About Prevention.
We have to think about prevention as an option. And these are all ways that we can be more active in our own healthcare.
Right.
Take charge of our health such that we can have better outcomes and really live longer and better.
Well, like exercise is very important. I walk up to five miles a day, and that has done a lot, a great deal for me because I have scoliosis. And the doctor said to me, who has known me all my life, said, "I thought you would be in a wheelchair by now."
And Fran, thanks so much for bringing up exercise. We can't talk about that enough on this show. We're going to have to do future segments on physical activity. Absolutely, staying active is a critical part of healthy aging. Fran, thank you so much for joining us on The Empowered Patient. Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. You're doing a wonderful job, and really, read this book, talk with your doctor. It is so important for your health, and it is free. So make the call, it's important.
I am empowered, and I'm taking charge of my health.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
Hey, buddy, pull over! Pull to the right! Don't you know, red lights and sirens mean pull to the right in an emergency seconds count, so when you drive, pay attention or else...
Save it, buddy, the ball call.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. And now you get to meet the person we've been talking about. Meet Florence Horn. Florence, welcome to our show. It's so good of you to come and join us.
Thank you.
Tell me what you thought when this crazy guy handed you a camera. Did you think, "Oh, I can do this," or were you hesitant?
No, I didn't think I could do it. As a matter of fact, my first introduction to the project, I was very skeptical. I greeted it with very mild interest. But I knew there was something about it that set it apart from any other kind of activity I could possibly participate in. In some ways, I knew that it was going to touch something very creative. The project was in a developmental stage.
Yes.
And so it required a little soul-searching for what the project could be like. And in my attempt to figure out whether I had a place in the project, it made me think a great deal about my personal process of aging, and it gave me a creative spark to examine in a new medium, something that I was not familiar with. I had many thoughts about my aging process, but this was the first time that something allowed me to express myself in a new way on a very large issue.
Well, once you focus on the idea of putting the cane in each photo, it really kind of anchored you, I think.
Well, I was post-surgical, and I was trying to find my way back. And in using the cane, the cane became a symbol for my instability, my feelings of unsteadiness, my need to find a new balance in my life, so that where I was emotionally, I was also physically in the same place.
Funny how those things mirror each other.
Yes, they do. And they affect each other, and they are sometimes the reason for a great new challenge. I did find it very challenging to even figure out what it is I might do.
You mean like a lesson you wanted to share or a perspective?
The issues were so large that I couldn't get a handle on what my personal vision was.
Yes, I understand. That's good.
And in searching for that, I needed to experiment. And the camera, that was, I was completely unfamiliar with camera work. But when Brian said, "Just point and shoot," that I found to be a very expansive idea, a fabulous way to experiment, just point and shoot.
Yep, and you can store lots of photos in that camera.
And that was a new experience for me, storing lots of photos.
Great, great. Brian, is this, this is not unique with the people who've come into the program, is it? It's a door opener.
For everyone, it was a unique experience, and they all experienced it in their own way.
Yes.
But yes, I found that many of the people found that the camera was a window into the world and that they could move through that window into the world. It empowered them. Florence has talked about how it had her engaging with people that she wasn't engaged with before because of that opportunity.
There's a tape recorder involved here, too, so you want to capture other people's words, obviously. Was that a challenge to you at first?
Well, I realized that I'm not the center of the presentation, of the center of the issue. I'm part of it. I found that there were many people who were curious, who were also not in a position to be active participants, but I felt that their voice had to be recorded. The fact that they were being interviewed, being recorded, gave them a sense of purpose. They felt they were part of a purposeful project.
Well, there is a historical value in all of this. So much, so many of our young people today don't accord older people the respect they deserve just for making it to 90. And you were 91 when you started this?
Well, I found that to be the most, the reason I needed to do the project. I found that I wanted to express the right we have as aging individuals, the right and the force to be engaged and respected in society.
So I'm with you on that. Brian, Over My Shoulder is what you consider the kind of the signature piece of Age Looks at Aging.
Yes.
Can you walk us through not only this picture, but some of your favorites that have occurred over time?
Sure. This one was taken by Bernie and Lillian Sacks. Bernie was a medical doctor who lived in independent living in this community. He took this photo, and I immediately loved it. But I particularly loved it for a couple of things. Number one, those are the hands of people who've been married for 69 years.
Wow.
And they're an inspiration. There's actually a funny story that goes with this, because when I arrived here, there was a story going around that one of them had to be feeble because they were always holding hands. And so whoever was the feeble one was being supported by the other one. And I actually asked them about this rumor, and I said, "Why do you hold hands?" And Bernie looked at me and he said, "You've been holding hands for 69 years. Why should we stop now?"
What a lovely story. Now, tell us about some of the others that you have, over time, picked out as favorites.
Sure. Well, Florence has taken a couple of other photos that are very important to the project. One is of a woman holding a magnifying glass.
Yes, I know that one.
And I actually look at that as almost a literal interpretation of age-looking at aging. Through her glasses and through the magnifying glass, it's beautiful. And Florence took another one that I think could be hanging in any great art gallery, and it's a photo of a path through the trees. And it's dark, and it's somber, and it's very expressive. There is a photo of two dancers taken by Fanya Spielberg. It's joyful, it's delightful. We had a participant named Lillian Berlin. She was our oldest, she was 95 years old.
Wow.
And I knew when I started the project that some people's hands would shake. Lillian was on a walker and had Parkinson's disease, and she would not not participate. She insisted on participating and expressing her life. And her photos do shake. What I didn't know when I started the project is how beautiful those photos would be at expressing her life. So there's, for instance, a photo of a piano player that is deeply moving to me.
Wow.
And I would like to say just a little bit more about the photo over your shoulder, because also included is a photo they took of a hand-tinted photo when they got married at the age of 20 at Cornell University. And when you compare this photo to these two beautiful young people, it's even more moving.
Wow. And you had another picture that you wanted to reference.
Yes, it's another one taken by Dr. Sacks, and it's a photograph of two sets of hearing aids and a little dish that says, "I love you."
Yeah, I grew up in a household. Grandpa Burr had the hearing aid, the old kind, where you wore the packet on your chest. He could tune us all out anytime he wanted to. Florence, I want to thank you so much for joining us. You are a wonderful advertisement for what I think is a great program. Brian, thank you. Thank you for sharing all this.
Thanks so much for this opportunity.
Give me the website again. AgeLooksAtAging.org. Well, we're going to take a little break to segue into Caregiver Corner, and you're going to want to listen to this one. It's pretty interesting.
Today, we're talking about caregiver stress. If you find yourself as the primary person taking responsibility for another person's activities of daily living, for example, preparing meals, helping the person get dressed and groomed, helping them with bathing and toileting needs, or helping them move from one place to another, then you are a family caregiver. There are many lovely things about being a caregiver. However, oftentimes, being a family caregiver can slowly inch up to the levels of high stress. Regardless of whether you're a family caregiver, taking on these tasks from a sense of responsibility, or you're doing it from a loving place in your heart, or a combination of both, caregiver stress is a reality that cannot and should not be ignored. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that treatments are not working the way you'd like to see them work, social withdrawal in that you're not going out to see friends or be with family or other activities that were once fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds, depression, which can start to break your spirit and affect your ability to cope, or irritability, which then makes you react in different and negative ways. And health problems begin to take their toll, both physically and mentally. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that perhaps the treatments aren't working the way you thought they would, social withdrawal from family, friends, and avoiding things that used to be fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds. Depression can begin to break your spirit and affects your ability to cope. Irritability leads to moodiness and triggers negative responses and reactions. Health problems begin to take their toll, both mentally and physically, on family caregivers. Being aware of and acknowledging these signs of stress are important, so that is why we are reminding you that caring for the caregiver is also important. If the family caregiver fails, then what? Who's going to step in with caregiving? So let's talk about how to relieve some of the stresses in family caregiving. Create a family network of support, including friends. Learn about the medical condition of the person you are caring for. Seek available patient and family services through community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, senior centers, disease-specific organizations like the Alzheimer's Association, Heart Association, American Diabetes, et cetera. Call the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging for information and referrals, and there are many more resources out there that you can learn about. Being informed is a great way to minimize stress. Other ways of reducing caregiver stress include asking for clarification when you don't understand something. Find a local support group to learn more about options and resources. Fellow caregivers are a great source of support, information, and resources. Remember to give yourself credit for what you're doing. It's okay to periodically make a mistake, you learn from it. When you feel your stress levels rising, remember to step away from the situation for a few minutes. Take deep breaths to bring fresh oxygen into your bloodstream and to your brain, and then go back and take care of the matter at hand. Remember, caring for the caregiver is important, too.
The project handed me a camera that allowed me to look at many things that were close to me in my environment, but that I had not carefully looked at. And in using that medium, I allowed a lot more influences to come into my life. I had the open door because I carried a camera and carried a recorder, and it made it easier for me to interact with other people than if I were to pursue them without the supervision of the project.
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first-aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
Hello, I'm Monique Chambers. I'm sitting here in Larchmont, and you are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Our Channel.[151.69]
Items 27 through 31.
Let's open the roll for consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. All right, matters before us now. Does anybody want to speak on this? Okay, there's no speakers in the queue. All right, open the roll on the item itself. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. All right, next item.
Madam President, that would take us to general public comment or our items called special.
All right, this is the time for general public comment. Mr. Smith will take the chair for me for just a second. First speaker is Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde, sorry, everybody here? Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. It's hard to express. Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian, for your advice regarding the DWP on Saturday. However, last week was more monumental for me. The Southwest Museum was declared dead on Tuesday, and on Friday it seemed to resurrect itself. So we're quite interested in what the progress will be regarding the Autry National Center, their grant program, and the Southwest Museum and its collection. So we're quite interested in that. We're, uh, celebrated the Loomis Day on Sunday. We wished that more of you would have come, but it was a celebration. There were a lot of people there and had a good time celebrating Mr. Charles Loomis, who was the founder of Los Angeles City's first museum, the Southwest Museum, which is still alive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley for anchor Patel. Mr. Patel.
Thank you. Semantic Jiu-Jitsu, right? A green apple is not an apple because a red apple is also an apple. Forsodomy is not torture because waterboarding is not torture. The level of our dialogue, our political dialogue, is juvenile. And I hear sirens. Our media is not designed to educate and inform us. Our media is designed to occupy and obfuscate what's actually going on. The Sierra Club on Saturday is out here saying rate hikes are okay because they don't actually look into the details of, the DWP has billions of dollars already invested in renewable energy, and that money is going to pockets of buddies, friends. I always like to talk about the City Treasurer's Investment and Cash Management Report, right? We talk about inflation this and inflation that. The way that inflation is, there are now more dollars chasing the same amount of goods, so each individual dollar is worth less. They redefine inflation, and Ben Bernanke comes in front of the Congress and says inflation is at all time low even though we just printed $600 billion. How does that make sense? Because we use a consumer price index, which is a basket of goods whose prices kept low by our wars in other countries. We take food and energy out of the hands of other people in all these other places, and therefore our prices stay the same. And now they have something called a core, core inflation, which actually excludes energy and energy and food. Core inflation excludes the price of energy and food. So I go back to the City Treasurer Investment and Cash Management Report. This is a $6 billion document that the city has invested. The city's not bankrupt. We have a lot of money. We just invest it, invest it into corporations like McDonald's, hundreds of millions of dollars in loans and bonds to McDonald's, to Nike, to Coca-Cola. There's hundreds of millions of dollars that this city invests into these corporations. We need to invest that money in the city in education.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. That concludes the public comments, believe it or not. Next item.
That would take us to items called special. I believe Mr. Parks wanted to take item 36 out of order.
All right, item 36. We'll hold that on the desk. Next item.
Item number eight, call special for cards.
Item number eight. Joseph, okay, Joseph Geary, Gertry. Joseph Gentry. Last call. All right, Mr. Gentry, thank you.
Hi, excuse me, good morning. I petitioned for item number eight and audit examination for item number eight. In a matter of the particular item on the agenda is a nuisance abatement order. I unfortunately have been bankrupt and living or squatting at the location and thus had petition and audit for examination at least as late as April of last year, 2010. So I was objecting to the order and had left filed documents on registry. I don't know just who may have the dockets now, but I had one in the order for the objection in item number eight, audit examination in a matter of my own bankruptcy, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Gentry. No further comments. There's no one on the speakers queue. Okay, let's proceed to vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes. Next item.
Just for the record, councilman, that item will be received and filed as much as the lien has been paid.
Thank you very much.
Next item is item 24, called special by Councilman Rosendahl.
Item 24, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask L.A. Inc. to come on up real quick? This is a three-year contract, folks, with L.A. Inc. It's a renewal. We all love them. They've done a great service to our community. Their whole commitment is to tourism and the multiplier effect that bringing folks from all over the world here does. They have offices in China and in other places, and I think it's important for the people to understand how the city operates when it comes to tourism, which is a major part of our economy here. So there's a three-year renewal, and my questions real quickly are, how much is your budget? How much, how many personnel do you have? What kind of strategies do you use so we can renew you for three years, which I'm excited about wanting to do?
Thank you very much, Mark Lieberman, the president of L.A. Inc., the Los Angeles Convention and Business Bureau. And first I should mention that this three-year renewal is really going to, number one, allow us to continue to do what we do today, and also, as we move forward, and as you recall last week, we, you approved the Tourism Marketing District, which will add additional funds for us to market and sell Los Angeles. And the lead time really for selling and marketing and booking conventions in the tourism industry, of course, is often much more than one year, and so a three-year contract, I think, is definitely appropriate. But to answer your question, you know, we're an organization of approximately 75 employees. At one time, we were up to about 85 employees, but due to the economic downturn, we found necessary to reduce our staff, reduce our pay, and do all the necessary things. But now, as the economy is improving, and as you know, tourism is the number-one industry here in Los Angeles, and it contributes approximately $13 billion to the local economy. And the good news is, is that as we take a look at 2010 as compared to 2009, we saw an increase in our contributions to the local economy of over 10%. And we believe that in 2011, this increase will continue. In 2010, we welcomed about 26 million visitors to Los Angeles, and again, this was an 8% increase of visitors to LA. And we continue to see, as we forecast in 2011, this number will also increase, which of course is very, very good for the economy. But I think also the big news here is that the dollars that we're spending in marketing and promoting internationally are really paying off. As you mentioned, councilman, we do have three offices, one in Beijing, one in London, and one in Tokyo with representatives in Miami that covers Mexico and South America. And as you take a look at the number of visitors that are coming here, 20% of our visitors are international visitors, but 35% of the spend comes from those 20% of visitors, because, as you know, international visitors have a tendency of staying longer and spending more. And the good news is, as you take a look at the numbers from 2009 to 2010, we saw a 34% increase of overseas international visitors. And as we take a look at 2011, this increase is continuing, so this is very, very positive news for us, for the city of Los Angeles, and of course also for the airport, as this will increase their revenues. The money that we're talking about is approximately, depending on the, obviously on the TOT collections, as we get one point of the 14 percentage points from the TOT. And that is approximately, at this point, about $10 million a year. And that money is used to both market and sell Los Angeles worldwide. Of course, we do it, we do it by advertising and promoting, and this money also is used to sell conventions and self-contained meetings. Our salespeople are located throughout the country, not just here in Los Angeles. Those that sell conventions and also meetings are located in Washington, in New York, in Chicago, and San Francisco, and in Los Angeles. The good news is about the convention business is that we continue to see this grow. And just to give you a quick number, in 2007, in 2007, LA hosted but 13 conventions. And you know, today's kind of another one of those historic days, because today we welcome E3 here again, which is one of our largest conventions. And the good news is, as I mentioned, we had 13 conventions in 2007, and our salespeople are out there, and this year we will host, in 2011, we will host 21 conventions. And then in 2012, because conventions are booked so far out, we estimate that we will host here in Los Angeles 24 conventions. So this is very, 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 very good news. I should mention that the hotels are starting to see a rebound also from the work that they're doing, and I think that the work that we're doing, their occupancy is up about 7% year over year. Their rates are up 10, from nine to 10, about 2%. And this represents a leadership throughout the U.S. that our rates and occupancy are up much more than other cities around the country. We will continue to see this growth in 2011 with a 6% to 7% increase. You know, just to give you a very, very quick snapshot of some of the other things that some of you are aware that we do, but it's important for those that are listening to know where their money, because it is their money, is being spent. We have information centers, one located downtown and one located in Hollywood and Highland. We have an informational booth at the Port of Los Angeles. We have informational centers at the convention center, and as we get more and more funds, we will open up other information centers as over a million people come to our information centers for information on a daily basis. We provide, we are the informational source for tourists that are coming here. As we have, we put out information both to consumers and to travel agents, to tour operators in 10 different languages. We put out mailings to all of these tourism employees on a monthly basis, and we also provide information through our visitor guide. We publish a visitor guide for the city of Los Angeles. We publish that twice a year, and we have about a million copies of the visitor guide. Many of you know us through the work that we do with the Dine LA program. We run that twice a year now for both visitors that come to Los Angeles and both for local residents. We started it about four years ago, and with the help of American Express, that has been a very, very positive program. It started with 125 restaurants, and now it's up to 300 restaurants twice a year, and I think it's a real benefit both for, again, those that are coming here and those that live here in the city.
Thank you very much. The gentlewoman from California, Ms. Hahn. Is that the first time?
Thank you. And thank you, Bill, for asking that good question on really, why is this important that we extend this contract for another three years? And we heard this in my committee, and we talked a lot about some of these issues. And clearly, tourism is such an important part of Los Angeles. I remember when tourism surpassed goods movement as the number-one industry in this region. And while that spoke to the declining volumes of cargo that we were experiencing, it also reminded Los Angeles that our economy, even in tough times, can really continue to thrive and grow through tourism. And we want these conventions coming here. And conventions like the one you talked about today, the E3 was all over the radio today. People are talking about it. This brings people who want to spend their money here in Los Angeles, and ultimately it creates jobs. So this is one, one industry that we want to figure out how to nurture. We want to figure out how to grow, and I think L.A. Inc., that is your job. That is your mission. One of the things we talked about in committee, while we understand the global picture of tourism, and while we understand how really each of those dollars is multiplied throughout the economy in Los Angeles, I know I've heard some concerns from some of the communities that I represent down in the Harbor area, and I know there was a couple of years where the Valley was also expressing a feeling that is all your effort, are all these dollars going just to promote our wonderful and beautiful downtown Los Angeles? Of course, we love what's happened at L.A. Live. It's absolutely a fabulous, fabulous new energy in Los Angeles, but is San Pedro getting left out? Is the Valley getting left out? Is our communities around the airport? What are we doing to promote tourism so that everybody benefits? Because I will tell you, in San Pedro, a lot of that economy does depend on the cargo, but a lot of that economy depends on the cruise ships and people coming down there to visit, stay in the hotels, eat in those restaurants, and shop in those shops. So what can you tell us beyond the global benefit of tourism? How do different neighborhoods and cities within Los Angeles, how can they be confident and assured that what we're doing today will not just be centered in one particular area of Los Angeles?
You know, I thank you for that question because, you know, we're faced with that question every day from our membership. We're an organization that has 1,000 member organizations, not just, of course, in downtown, but throughout the city, whether it be in San Pedro, or the Valley, or at the airport, or wherever. And that's our job. Our job is to make sure that they're benefiting from the work that we do. But to give you assurance that we will make sure that we are providing the services is that, as we brought on the Tourism Marketing District with those dollars and the dollars that hopefully we are securing from the city and our sponsors and our members, we have revamped our even board of directors to make sure that we have representation from San Pedro, from the Valley, from the airport, and that this representation has a voice in making decisions that are good for those locations. And I think that as we move forward and with more money, because it takes money to be able to market and to sell every area in the city of ours, and because we are a different type of a city, we have to remember, this city is so different than marketing San Francisco or New York or Chicago, which are really self-contained areas. We are a region of five different regions, and we have to make sure that we are providing those services. And you can be assured that those voices are very, very loud, and everybody is engaged in trying to make those very difficult decisions on how to spend our money that are going to be the most productive way in spending that, in those resources.
You know, and I know my time's up, but one of the big stamps of approval on renewing your contract actually came from the hotel industry. Hotel industry, who really believed in this tourism and marketing district proposal, agreed to add a small percentage of a tax on their hotel bills to go towards marketing the city, said one of the things they most wanted to see was the continuity of L.A. Inc. as we move through this emerging tourism and marketing district and work out the kinks on how that's actually going to work. They wanted to make sure that you were still there doing your job, because they actually believe without a doubt the benefits of what L.A. Inc. does.
Well, you know, that's really nice here, and I appreciate that from the hotel industry. And I will mention to you, as it relates just to your own community, to assure you that you've had a change in general managers over the last two weeks at the Doubletree in San Pedro, and tomorrow I will be meeting with your new manager in the Doubletree in San Pedro to make sure that that person is engaged with us.
I love hearing that. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labonge.
Anybody on the queue? Madam President, anybody else on the queue?
Yes, well, yes, there's one more person.
Okay. To just be real brief, the beauty of Los Angeles is our history. In the 1920s, when they built this grand city hall, they did it as a testament to welcome people here. In the 1920s, we applied and asked for the world to come to us for the '32 Olympic Games. Again, in the 1970s, when all cities were running away because of the challenges of Montreal and their Olympic Games and the Olympic movement and its pause, Los Angeles welcomed the world to the '84 Games, which was a tremendous asset to us, which has sprung an evolution of great art facilities because of the combination of arts and athletics. And it's all about this, how you promote the city. And this team needs to have this approved to move forward. This committee heard it, which recommends this, and it's a positive. And it's not just here. This morning, we're going to hear later from Councilmember Zain, the wonderful Lebanese-American community is here, a council member from Beirut, our sister city, the Council General's here, because right on the corner is our sister city sign. And you all see it, when you hit the red light, how many people stop and take a picture and see that dynamic that this city welcomes everybody. You're on the right track. Keep it up. Thank you very much. I call for an eye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and I just wanted to congratulate you. In a very tough economic time, I saw, I think it was in Travel Leisure magazine the other day, L.A. was listed as one of the top 10 destinations in America, primarily because our nightlife and the competitive rates in our hotels. So in a very tough market, you're out there doing your job. We're on, the first time I've seen us in the Travel Leisure list for a long time, and so congratulations. I think our future is great, and you're keeping the conventions coming here, people coming here, and the future's very bright. But thank you for all you've done, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Zain, yes, Mr. Powell? All right, forthwith on that last item. Thank you. Mr. Zain, you are going to make a brief presentation at this time.
Thank you. It's always. Congratulations, Mark. We got folks that are in here from Lebanon, so that's helping tourism, correct? We're at the forefront of tourism. Thank you. If I could have the Council General Lebanon join me, please, along with the council member from Beirut. We have a very special acknowledgement and presentation. We had a presentation outside where the sister city signs are. The folks from Lebanon are here, and we dedicated some benches that were done by a man who is well-known for his abilities to design, and that's Trip. Halish, Trip, if you can please come up here. Trip? Where is Trip? Trip is somewhere. So, oh, there we are. Good morning. Okay, so the celebration was honoring five-year anniversary of the Los Angeles-Sister City relationship, and Council President Garcetti went with me to Beirut five years ago. We did a sister city relationship. And now we have benches that are under the sign, the sign of our sister city organizations throughout the world in the City Hall South. And Trip, Hines, is the one who designed the benches, incredible benches, incredible, what you did with those. Recognizes publications such as Architectural Digest, Home &amp; Garden, over 70 other periodicals worldwide. Client base includes Reese Witherspoon, Christina Aguilera, Courtney Cox, John Stamos, and Cher, just to name a few. So you are definitely an accomplished individual. So in appreciation, we have a presentation for you, for your construction of that, for our wonderful Sister City program. We have right here for Trip, for the generous donation of your time, talent, and eye for style in the design and production of the Los Angeles Bay with Sister City benches. Honored to add this beautiful craftsmanship to the Civic Center in celebration of the fifth anniversary of the Sister City Agreement, signed by yours truly, Councilman Mr. Design, Eric Garcetti, our president, who's on a mission for United States Navy, and our council member Tom Labonge. So we want to acknowledge and thank you for that. And we also have, in addition, the donation of a fire truck. When we were in, you can stay here, Trip. When we were in Beirut, we asked if there's anything they need, and they said, yeah, we need some fire equipment. And over the last five years, we've sent them fire equipment, small fire equipment. And today, they have an actual fire truck that is being sent, and we did photographs and fire engine, fire truck, whatever it is. It's red, and it has hoses on it, and it puts out fires. I mean, firefighters are very sensitive about fire truck, fire engine, paramedic unit. At any rate, they're getting a big truck that's going to go on a ship, and it's going to go to Lebanon. It's a surplus and part of our Sister City Agreement. We can do that, so there's no expense to the taxpayers. They will pay for the transportation back to Beirut, and we have the Council General from Lebanon, the Council General established here in Los Angeles, who's going to say a few words, and then we're going to hear from the council member from Beirut who flew over for this presentation. And then we're going to have a reception upstairs and acknowledging the wonderful people from Lebanon. And being Lebanese, it's a real honor to stand before you with the folks that are here this morning to this commemoration of five years and our continuing support for the people of Lebanon. Council General of Lebanon.
Honorable President, Mrs. Jen Perry, honorable Mrs. Tom Labonge, honorable Mr. Dennis Zain, honorable members of the L.A. City Council, honorable Mr. Nadeem Usta, honorable Mr. Nadeem Halawani, Mrs. Lurth Saab, Most Cleverant Father Zaidin, Mrs. Camille LaBranche, distinguished presidents of associations and community leaders, dear friends. I would like first to thank the honorable Mr. Eric Garcetti, the honorable Mr. Tim Labonge, and the honorable Mr. Dennis Zain for their contributions and support to the L.A.-Beirut Sister City Committee, and also to thank Mrs. Wafa Habbala and all the members of the L.A.-Beirut Sister City Committee for the work that they do to strengthen the ties of friendship between our beautiful capital Beirut and the wonderful city of Los Angeles. As acting Council General of Lebanon here in Los Angeles, I am very proud of the members of our Lebanese community for the contributions that they have made in their adopted country, the United States of America, and more precisely here in California, and for their continued attachment to Lebanon. Continue to be proud to be Lebanese, and always remember that it is through our unity that Lebanon's name can shine in the four corners of the world through your actions and contributions to your adopted countries. I would also like to add how wonderful it is to have the L.A.-Beirut Sister Cities Committee and the support of Councilmen Mr. Labonge, Mr. Zain, and the honorable Mr. Eric Garcetti. The excellent relationship that exists between Lebanon or between Los Angeles and Beirut is a reflection of the excellent relationship that exists between the United States of America, the country of freedom and democracy, and Lebanon, the country of also harmony, freedom, and democracy in the Middle East. And here I would like to mention that the United States is home to about 3 million Lebanese people. In addition, it is the duty of every Lebanese living here in Los Angeles to promote excellent ties between Los Angeles and Lebanon through cultural exchanges, business exchanges, and trade. And as you just said here, tourism is a great industry in Los Angeles. It is also the number-one industry for Lebanon. And also, every Lebanese should contribute to their adopted societies by respecting local customs and laws and their good integration. To conclude, I wish you all, honorable members of the L.A. City Council, the best in your work for the city of Los Angeles, and we all wish the L.A.-Beirut Sister Cities Committee the best in its future endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. Mr. Zain?
Thank you, Council General. And we have direct from Beirut, Lebanon, who flew in for this presentation. Nadeem Costa, who's a council member from Beirut, Lebanon, from the City Council, please address our council. There you go.
Honorable Council of Los Angeles, dignitaries, guests, I have the privilege of representing Beirut City and being with you today and sharing the word and sharing this special day. We stand here and enjoy what we... We stand here and enjoy what we enjoy and the privileges we have because our forefathers, the founders of this city and the founders of the city of Beirut, have worked and invested their lives, and the biggest investment was simply people like you and me. And I want to call us today, if we want our citizens, the people of our cities, if we want our children and grandchildren to celebrate, to enjoy what we are enjoying today, and be able to carry the legacy of these partnerships and these two cities, we need to invest in them. We have challenges. Your council and our council have challenges that we deal with every day that relates to the everyday life of the people. But the biggest challenge and the biggest opportunity that we have are the people of our cities. Everything can change, but the biggest opportunity remains there. I want to thank you again for this great privilege, great opportunity. I want to thank President Zain, President Garcetti, excuse me, Honorable Council Zain, and Honorable Councilmember Tom Labange for this great privilege to be here. I want to also take the opportunity to thank Ms. Wafa Habbala, Dr. Nashif, and Mr. Faris Wehbi. Thank you for the great time, and I also want to use this time to present small tokens from Beirut City. It's the history of Lebanon by stamps. I want to present this to Council President Eric Garcetti. Would you be kind enough to...
Yes, I will.
Yeah. Councilmember Zain, thank you very much for the great effort. Look forward to developing that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Labange?
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here.
Ms. Wafa Habbala? Thank you for the hard work.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Faris Wehbi?
Thank you.
Thank you again, and God bless.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge again, if... Please stand the folks that are here representing the great community, Beirut, Lebanon, the Lebanese folks that are here today for this celebration. Please stand and be acknowledged. And also, former council member Robbie from the Beirut City Council. And we have a reception at the Bradley Tower. You're all invited to join us as we celebrate this wonderful occasion. And Tom Labange is poking, I guess he wants to say something. Shuk run, shuk run! Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Zain, and thank you for the wonderful presentation. We are going to call item 30...
We need a vote on 40.
Sorry, open the roll, please.
This is the vote on a fire truck.
Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Very well.
Thank you.
Forthwith.
Forthwith. All right, item 36 is up next.
We'll call Bernard Parks is on the cue.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to do on this item, if we could call the available cards for the public comments, and then I'd ask Chief Moore and Jerry Miller to come to the front table, and then we can proceed with after the public comment period.
We'll go to public comment first. We have...
Well, you speak first then.
Jessica Hayes or Kent?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Just a minor change in the proceedings.
Okay.
Mr. Parks has been gracious enough to allow me to say a few words since this may take a while, and I have to...
After Ms. Perry, we'll go to public comment.
Great, okay, great. I want you all to know that I am joining my colleague, the former police chief and council member Bernard Parks, and voicing my opposition to portions of the Secure Communities legislation, and I hope that our colleagues vote to support the resolution before them today. Mr. Parks' resolution supports state legislation that allows municipalities to opt out of the Secure Cities Program. It is well-intentioned. Some of the language in Secure Communities may do more harm than good in a city where we have worked for decades to have very good, close, solid relationships with diverse communities, relationships built on mutual trust and respect. This language undermines LAPD Special Order 40, which has proven time and time again to be an effective means of crime fighting and of supporting our efforts to ensure that the community is our partner in maintaining safe neighborhoods. So, for that reason and for the reasons I would also like to highlight, particularly of interest to women, a woman or a mother may be afraid of coming forward and getting speaking about criminal activity in her neighborhood for fear of being deported or separated from her children, who could be left in a system or left in an abusive situation and gone unchecked. Domestic violence cases in the extreme have resulted in death of not just the victim. So, this is the type of violence that we can and should prevent. By taking away that element of fear and continuing to keep the doors of communication open between the community and LAPD, we have seen neighborhoods grow closer and become safer places to live. We want all of our residents to be partners in solving crime and fighting crime. This can only happen when we remove the fear and that we protect the important relationships that our officers have built with our communities so they can do their jobs effectively and people continue to feel protected. This proposal of Secure Communities, if left unchecked, could be a detriment to the safety of an entire community. So, for that reason and the reasons I've stated, I support Mr. Parks' resolution.
Thank you. We will now go to public comment. Jessica Cape or Kent?
Hi, it's Jessica Carp from the National Day Labor Organizing Network. Thank you. We're here in support of the resolution against the Secure Communities Program. This program is called Secure Communities. That sounds like something nice, but the name is inaccurate. This program is tearing families apart. Already, 14,600 people have been deported from the County of Los Angeles through the Secure Communities Program. The program was presented as a program that would focus on serious criminals, but that is not the case. The numbers show that 3,600 of the people who've been deported had not convicted, had not been convicted of any crime. Another 3,000 had convictions for minor offenses like traffic offenses. This resolution is necessary to restore safety to our community. Because of the Secure Communities Program, people are scared to contact the police. Women who've called the police for help to protect themselves from abusive partners have ended up in deportation through the Secure Communities Program. Witnesses are scared to talk to the police about crimes because they fear being deported. With this resolution, Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, needs to stand up and tell the country that we are not Arizona. People in Los Angeles do not need to live in fear of their own police department. Momentum is building against this program. The Congressional Hispanic Caucus has called for a national moratorium. The states of New York, Illinois, and Massachusetts have asked to opt out. They're standing up for the rights of their residents, and with this resolution, we urge the City Council to do the same and say no to the Insecure Communities Program. Thank you.
Next, Nancy Ramirez. Nancy Ramirez. After Nancy will be Julia Wallace.
Good morning. Maldives supports Councilman Parks' resolution to give local governments the option to opt out of Secure Communities and to promote it as a voluntary instead of a mandatory program. This is a sensible and reasonable approach to a flawed federal program. The city of Los Angeles, as home to a large immigrant population, has seen many of its residents who have no prior criminal history be detained and removed as a result of the Secure Communities Program. Secure Communities was intended to remove persons who commit serious and violent crimes, but has instead ensnared hard-working, law-abiding residents. Many of those detained and deported have U.S. citizen family members, and their families suffer the consequences of this flawed program with no recourse. The city of Los Angeles has a responsibility to promote policies that promote public safety. LAPD has already adopted Special Order 40 in recognition of the importance of building trust and positive relations with the immigrant community in Los Angeles. Secure Communities blurs the line between immigration and local police and has a chilling effect on immigrants' willingness to come forward to report crimes and to cooperate in police investigations. We believe that a clear separation between law enforcement and ICE is necessary. Otherwise, law enforcement's ability to solve crimes will be compromised, and we are all less safe. We urge you to adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Julia Wallace?
Hello, members of the board. My name is Julia Wallace. I'm a member of the Southern California Immigration Coalition, and I'm also a board member of the South Central Neighborhood Council. And I'm speaking for myself, although I'm sure because of the stance that we took on that the South Central Neighborhood Council will also be adopting a resolution opposing Secure Communities and supporting resolutions like this one. As my colleagues and community members have said, people, in particular undocumented immigrants, have been living in constant fear of deportation, whether it's the checkpoints that have been happening where people have been getting their cars taken away for lack of a driver's license or feeling or being addressed even on the bus, at the bus, because ICE gets on the bus, or because people have had their homes or their workplaces taken away or invaded because of ICE. Secure Communities is another reach in terms of disrupting the lives of people who live in Los Angeles and particularly areas of undocumented immigrants. This also affects the homeless population of downtown L.A. with increased policing and attacks on people who live or who are homeless who live in Skid Row. And so, I think that instead of this being Secure Communities, really, it's a draconian measure, and it's a way that doesn't really keep the people of Los Angeles secure, but really continues to secure the ideas of those who would have, would attack undocumented people or immigrants in general. And I think that it's important that the board adopt this resolution, opt out of Secure Communities, and that we send a message to the rest of this country that we're not going to keep going along with these anti-immigrants and anti-immigrant and racist attacks that have been happening. So, I really urge the vote, the board, to vote no and to oppose Secure Communities and to continue to be public against the draconian measures that have been happening all around the country. Thank you.
Anna Menjiba?
Buenos dias, soy Anna Menjiba.
Good morning, my name is Anna Menjiba. I'm here to tell you that we were caught at work by the police. I was 24 days in jail. They send us to immigration. And we are, at this moment, we have an order for deportation. It's not fair. We have children here. I've been living here in Los Angeles for 18 years. I don't want to be deported to my country. We are working to survive. We are not harming anybody. If we don't work, how are we going to survive? I would like to ask you to help us and to understand this. We want to continue here with our children. We want to educate our children and provide a good life for them. We need the support of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco Moreno?
Good morning. My name is Francisco Moreno with the Council of Mexican Federations, Consejo de Federaciones Mexicanas de Norte América. On behalf of the Council of Mexican Federations, we support the resolution of Councilmember Parks because our people is, our immigrant people is suffering with these deportations. I personally have a friend from Michoacan, Mexico, that was deported because he passed a red light, and he was killed last month in Michoacan because of the violence in Mexico. And, you know, this is going on every day. Our people, this has been deporting by this program. We want Security Communities, but we don't want this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tomas Rodriguez?
My name is Tomas Rodriguez. I represent the car washers. I'm here to give my opinion today. My coworkers and I, we are together with the police every day, picketing lines every day with the police. Yeah, whatever is happening now, I don't think should be possible because how could it be that the police is going to be an ally of ICE? The police is here to take care of our communities, not to deport us and our coworkers. How could it be that our immigrants see a crime or an accident and cannot report this to the police? That's why I want to say that whatever, it's not possible for this to happen, and that's why we ask for your collaboration. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you. Antonio Bernabé is our last speaker, and then we'll go to members.
My name is Antonio Bernabé. I'm a senior organizer for CHIRLA. Today, I want to share with you, members of the City Council, some realities of the Secure Communities Program. Since this program started two years ago, it was confused in how this program is going to secure communities with deportations. And now, we are seeing that this program is totally wrong and is affecting our families and the communication in between the law enforcement officers, the LAPD, and the communities in Los Angeles. In my everyday work, I'm seeing the laborers being arrested and deported just for being in the corner looking for work to support their families and seeing the street vendors arrested and deported, and some of them still fighting deportation because they are providing for their families, working in an honest way in the streets of Los Angeles. But also, I'm seeing women reporting domestic violence and being arrested and fighting deportation at this time. So, Secure Communities is a program that is creating mistrust and fear in our communities, but more important is breaking the communication among the police, the police officers, and the community. And that is silly wrong because the communication is what is bringing security to our communities and to the police department. We are afraid to call the police when we are victims of a crime, and we are afraid to talk when we are witnesses of a crime. So, that is not right. So, that's why Secure Communities has to stop. Many families in Los Angeles are being victims of this program. We are, I have with me two moms, moms or kids and children, that are now facing deportation, and that's not right. They never committed a crime before and never committed any crime in the present. The only crime is to be fighting for and supporting for their families. One of them has still an uncle bracelet. Show it to them, please. And this is not right. She's just a mother providing for her children like any other mother in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask the CLA and also Chief Moore to come up. I'd like the CLA to give us just a brief overview of their report they distributed this morning, particularly on the issues that deal with the city's long-term support of issues that reflected in this motion and also what some of the concerns that they list on page 2. Then, I'd like to ask Chief Moore to talk from the perspective of the operational issues that impact the department.
Certainly. Well, the council has, as you know, for many years with Special Order 40, supported immigrant rights and was concerned about, you know, access to law enforcement by the immigrant community. And so, the department has, with the support of the council, for, again, many... And so the department has, with the support of the council, for, again, many, many years, wanted to encourage, you know, law-abiding citizens to be able to come forward and work with LAPD to resolve those issues, and didn't want to create a barrier there. The secure communities program has created a significant concern in a lot of areas. Some of the statistics indicate that 70% of the deportations in the program are actually individuals who are either accused of minor offenses, or there are no convictions at all. So it's not focused on convicted violent criminals. So, in essence, there are a lot of concerns about the implementation of the program and the impact that it would have on the immigrant community in working with LAPD.
Councilmembers, good morning. Assistant Chief Mike Moore on behalf of LAPD and the department, or I sit here today to reaffirm and stress to all members of this body, as well as the citizens and community members in Los Angeles, our absolute support and adherence to the tenets of Special Order 40, which goes that an undocumented alien status is of no interest to the department. It's not a matter of a person's alien status, whether they're here lawfully or otherwise, that will result in us initiating a police action. That was, that is true today, and that was, it goes back to 1979, when Special Order 40 was created by then-Chief of Police Darryl Gates. The department trains and insists that its members operate with equal protections for all members of the communities in Los Angeles, regardless of their status. The department also reaches out and makes every effort to build and, and continue to increase the trust with the various communities of Los Angeles. And when programs and strategies, either in definition or in perception, undermine that through the, through actions that would pose the department to be an enforcer of one's alien status, or an immigrant off, immigrant rights, or, I'm sorry, an immigrant enforcement officer, then, again, the public's trust of the police is undermined, the public's cooperation with the police is undermined. And what will certainly result of that is a criminal element within our communities will prey upon those communities that are avoiding the law enforcement. So the department is aware of the concerns regarding secure communities. Chief Beck remains supportive of secure communities to the extent that it focuses on the identification and removal of violent criminals. But is, the department is also well-aware of the many reports that unfortunately appears that the program has had a consequence on minor offenses and individuals involved in traffic offenses and such, and that has not been the department's desire, nor do we believe that it was the intention of this program when it was authored in 2008, that that would be the impact here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Chief Moore, thank you, Jerry. Colleagues, I would just like to bring up two or three points that I think are most significant to me is that, and before folks take off on the tangent outside of these chafers, that we are a sanctuary city, before they take off on a tangent, that we are harboring criminals in our community. I would just like to think that the larger issue for me is that this is a home rule issue. The City of L.A. should set policies that relates to how they conduct business with the community in which they serve. We should not be imposed upon by federal dictates that are inconsistent with our long-going, long-going efforts of addressing our community issues. One of the most significant issues of the home secure communities is it impedes victims from making crime reports. That is a 40-year journey in the city of L.A. for the city, for the Los Angeles Police Department, from Astafadoris to Asian Task Force to Special Order 40. It's finding ways through language skills and also breaking down barriers to allow victims to come in unimpeded to report crimes. We also, if we look at this, it's absolutely essential that any program that's proposed allows local communities to opt out if it is negatively impacting their community. And I think that what everyone is asking the federal government to do is to comply with his original goals of the program. And the fact that operationally they've gotten away from it, no one, no matter what the issues are, I've never met even the most avid immigration advocates in our community, never support violent criminals in our community remain here on immigration status. And so the issue of concentrating on serious criminals and serious crimes and violent crime is where they should propose the program, and they should go back to that. The final point is that each of our 15 districts have an immigrant community, a variety of immigrant communities from the issues that we reflect on. So it's just not looking at one specific immigrant community, we're talking about all immigrant communities deserve these rights in our community. So I'd ask for an aye vote, and as you notice on this resolution, we've not identified a specific piece of legislation. We've come up with themes that we thought were important. As legislation is developed in our state of federal government, we certainly will have an opportunity to address that, amend it or support it. But clearly, we want to make sure that the major themes of Special Order 40 are captured in this resolution.
Councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to stand and thank Councilmember Bernard Parks, Councilmember Perry, for this very important piece of legislation. Colleagues, in your legislative analyst report, you'll see that since 2008, there are some very significant facts as a result of this program. It states that this, since 2008, the securities program has resulted in over 70% of deportations on the program of individuals that had no convictions, were accused of minor offenses. It has unfairly impacted innocent people, victims of crime, and those requesting police assistance in domestic violence and incidents. So those are the facts that have emerged. I want to thank Chief Moore for his presentation. It clarifies that we are not lessening our focus on preventing crime. What we're trying to do is build trust. As you can see from the folks who are here today, muchas gracias por estar aquí, that they are advocating for what our grandparents, our great-grandparents were doing when they came to this country. And it is no different. So when I get out of the airport, once in a while I'll get on a taxi, and I'll talk to an individual from Africa who is a taxi driver. I'll talk to some of the folks from Ireland who are here because of their issues that are happening in that economy, Canadians, I mean, there's a whole, Southeast Asians, I mean, there's a whole range of populations in an international city like Los Angeles. So we're going to engender this trust, we're going to focus on how we enhance that level of confidence. We need to be able to assert ourselves in a way, and just reinforce what Councilmember Parks is emphasizing, local control. Let us decide what is best for our communities, for our city, and let us learn from our lessons for the past 40 years with Special Order 40, and let's move forward in a way where we can start essentially de-emphasizing this, this sense of ugliness, there's a meanness to this, to these federal policies that is punitive to the most vulnerable people. So let's recognize that as an American citizen, this is not the America we want. As an American citizen, we should be able to embrace all peoples and build a better future in this international economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Zain.
Thank you. I need a point of clarification on this. What, I'm reading the resolution, secure communities programs in 2008, important tool in the identification and deportation of illegal immigrants who have been convicted of violent crimes. And under Special Order 40, the police department has an individual convicted of violent crime, murder, robbery, rape, burglary, not traffic violations. The department does work with immigration, homeland security, on those individuals, is that correct?
Yes, it's, the primary charge is the, is a serious crime, murder, rape, robbery, as you've said. If the person's alien status is learned, and they're found to be here without documentation, then at the point in time when which their sentence is completed, the state of California actually turns them, would refer them to ICE. It's not really, it's not a police matter. We will cooperate with the, with our, our law enforcement partners of ICE as required to provide them information when we have probable cause to believe the person is here unlawfully. But what we're, what we do not do is we do not initiate an action regarding an individual to determine their alien status, to determine whether they're here lawfully or otherwise. If they're arrested for robbery, they're treated like everyone else, whether they're here lawfully or otherwise. They've committed a crime, we pursue justice through the criminal justice system, and at some point, they may face an added consequence with ICE as to their alien status, but that's not a police matter.
Okay, well, Special Order 40, I'm trying to get a clarification. What it says here is convicted of violent crimes, and I know the immigrant community is victimized by violent crimes. And no one wants criminals in a community, people who are committing robberies, the gangs that are terrorizing communities. But I understand the police department, with Special Order 40, there is a connection with those individuals who are committing violent crimes and deportation, not just stop someone for a traffic ticket or someone walking down the street, you're here illegally, we're going to deport you. So I need some clarification on that issue, because looking at the resolution, it talks about the secure communities program and convicted of violent crimes. And it seems that convicted violent crimes is something that Special Order 40 supports.
There is a, there's a disconnect, and what's been stated, Councilman, is that secure communities did start off with efforts to remove the most dangerous criminal aliens from the United States. It has a risk-based approach, it lists some three levels of individuals who are arrested that it would focus its efforts on, on a risk-based analysis. What is determined, however, in, is increasing numbers of analysis or studies, is that the vast majority of individuals that are subject to review by ICE in the secure communities are not the most, are not violent criminals. They are instead, at times, minor traffic offenses. They may just simply be here in an undocumented status and got, and got, and somewhere was stopped, not by LAPD, but by another police agency, somewhere else in here in the state or across the country, and then they're referred to ICE through a fingerprint check. And then ICE will, will then take deportation action against them, and that has included victims of crimes as well. So to the department, the department's efforts today is that we are supportive of secure communities when it is effective in targeting violent criminals. To the extent that it targets, or it would result in actions against a victim of a crime, against a witness to a crime, against a person who has not committed a violent offense, the department has great concern because it undermines. And whether that is perception or reality, what is behind us is the peoples, the people in our communities that are believing that, as I sit here today, that I have an interest in them, and that my interactions with them could result in their deportation, simply for the fact that they're here unlawfully. And that is, as Councilman Parks indicated and others, is a terrible tragedy and, and very caustic circumstance for the public's trust that we need to maintain.
So it's been, so it's been misdirected and misused by some law enforcement agencies, that's what you're saying?
It's been, yes.
Because the intended purpose was, and I think even the folks that are here, who are supportive of Mr. Parks and this resolution, don't advocate criminal activity and don't support criminals terrorizing our community. They want those people incarcerated, and if they're here illegally and they get deported, but you're talking about a person who may be here illegally, who's not a violent criminal, who hasn't committed a crime of any significance, and getting caught in this, this trap, or this, this net where deportation takes place.
Yes, in summary, the perception alone undermines our ability to maintain and build upon the trust of these communities, the trust that's vital, communication is vital to maintaining their safety and really the safety of all Angelenos.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Zain.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Labange, Councilmember Labange.
Thank you. Ben Benitez, what's important about this city hall, as I spoke earlier, how we welcomed the world in the 1920s. And as Mr. Reyes spoke earlier, my great-grandfather came from Ireland. He lived right here on Main Street. People come from all over the world. As we look at people, your people are Los Angeles, and our job is to serve the people of Los Angeles. In this very good report, Mr. Miller, and I want to thank you, you talk about other regions of the country, in Washington, which abuts Canada, in Pennsylvania, which is in the heart of the Northeast, in our nation's capital, they all have questions about this term. And secure, secured, secured communities sounds more like a CDD program that they have for, you know, for something else. I think what we have to do is continue as a Los Angeles police, under the late, Darryl Gates saw that long ago, saw that long ago as the dynamics of our city, which has always been a welcoming place. People who are bad and who should not be here, should not be here, and that's the job of law enforcement to deal with. But the people who are here, are here, and that's what makes the city. And I do hope one day that the federal government, in working with all of North America, could figure out our challenges, and hope everyone will rise in North America in the economic challenges. The challenges that we have and the money that we spend could be spent in other ways, possibly to lift people higher instead of to hold people down. But in this effort here, I stand as supportive. And in this morning, there's several things that we talked about as far as our Sister City program, talk about international trade, talk about tourism, all that adds to the flavor of what is, is what Los Angeles is. And if Deputy Chief, now Assistant Chief, Mike Moore, who's been constant in, in, in an area of community safety, could sit there and say, this is the right thing, that's the right thing. So I thank you, thank Chief Beck. And if you have a chance, when you're done, make sure you visit the tower at City Hall and the top, Tom Bradley lookout above the city, that we all work for in a great way. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Weisar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, you know, Special Order 40 has worked, and I think we, most of us would agree that it has worked in the time that it has been in place. And the reason it has worked, and we haven't moved to change it, is because we see that it helps keeping our crime levels low. If people feel comfortable approaching an officer, whether they're a victim or a witness, we are able to go after those who are committing crimes. And people are not in fear that they will be deported if they come in contact with law enforcement in the city of Los Angeles, irrespective of what their legal status in this country is. And we have touted Special Order 40 as one tool that has helped us keep crime low here in the city of Los Angeles. Now here comes secure communities that is contrary, or will undermine, people's ability to feel comfortable to approach law enforcement in the city of Los Angeles. If this continues, more and more the word will spread out that they will, are deporting people for infractions, or even as possible witnesses if they come in contact with law enforcement, and that will undermine our ability, continue to let our population know that irrespective of your legal status, you should feel comfortable approaching law enforcement officials here in the city of Los Angeles. And so what we want to say as a city is, no thank you, federal government, we want to be able to say yes or no. We may say yes, if you change secure communities to really only go after those convicted of serious crimes. Because after all, the immigrant community also wants them out of their communities. We don't want convicted felons, or those who commit serious crimes in our communities. And if you see, if you see the statistics, the victims of most of the undocumented people who are committing serious felonies are mostly immigrants themselves. So certainly, this is the right policy, Special Order 40 has worked. We're saying no thank you to secure communities unless it is changed to really focused on identifying those who are convicted of felonies. As all of us have said here, nobody wants to support criminals. Our passing of this motion does not in any way say we are supporting criminals, and I think that's a very important thing to underline. So I tell the public that lives in the city of Los Angeles, if you are documented or not, you should still feel, feel free to contact law enforcement, whether you're a victim or a witness, and, and that will help us all feel safer in the city of L.A. And it's great to see that our own former chief of police, Bernard Parks, who has worked with Special Order 40, could attest to the benefits of Special Order 40, and now looking at this new policy, also stand up and say strongly that we don't want this in the city of L.A. unless it is changed.
Thank you. Councilmember Krikorian.
Thank you, President Cardenas. First, I want to say thank you to Bernard Parks for bringing this matter before us. And I know that certainly the chattering class out there will be talking, as you mentioned, Mr. Parks, about, about sanctuary cities... Mr. Parks, about sanctuary cities and so forth. And I think it's safe to say that no one among them, and no one around this horseshoe, knows more about what it takes to fight crime than Bernard Parks, who led the Los Angeles Police Department. And so for him to bring this, I think speaks volumes. And I want to speak a little bit, Chief, about Special Order 40, because I think this is one of the most misunderstood issues in the public discourse in our city. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to talk about it a little bit. And Mr. Weisar, I think, covered some of the topics very well. Special Order 40 was initiated not by this council, not by the mayor, but by Chief Daryl Gates. Is that right?
Yes, in November of 1979.
Okay. So when Chief Daryl Gates brought Special Order 40 forward and initiated it, and when that order has been supported by every single chief of police since then, and this is going to be a leading question, I'll admit, but did Chief Gates initiate Special Order 40 because of his long history of advocacy for the immigrant community and for human rights, or because it made policing easier for cops on the beat and because it improved public safety?
Well, the latter, to improve the public's trust, the cooperation, the partnership with all the communities of Los Angeles.
Because it made, as, for all the reasons that Mr. Weisar said, it made it easier to bring witnesses forward, it made it easier to establish the relationship of trust, it made it easier to do community policing if you had this relationship of trust.
That's correct.
So now let me go into a couple of specific examples, if I may, Mr. President, and I know I've read it a little over. In a domestic violence situation, is it not the case that domestic violence situations, when a police officer responds to it, are, first of all, very dangerous for police officers often, and second, are they not often very difficult to sort out on the scene as to what happened, who's responsible, how it got initiated, and maybe even broader than domestic violence? A mutual combat out on the street, where you have people who are engaged in a fight, and a police officer comes upon that and has to decide who's the assailant and who's the victim?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in those circumstances, if the victim knows that the police officer might arrest both the victim and the assailant until they can be sorted out, the victim knows that, and knows that they're going to be fingerprinted, and that those fingerprints are going to go to ICE, and that victim happens to be, have illegal status, isn't it exceedingly less likely that those victims of crimes will report those crimes?
I think it's a very logical conclusion.
Okay. And then let me, let me just add one other point to this. Our police officers are faced with very difficult judgments that have to be made every single day on every single arrest. And there's a degree of what lawyers call prosecutorial discretion. You know, a police officer has to decide what actions, which crimes merit an arrest and which don't, because you have limited resources, you can't arrest everyone for every single crime, and you have to make those judgment calls. And I think that's the reality of the world of policing. In circumstances where a police officer may know or suspect that a perpetrator of crime, a minor crime, might have illegal status, is it possible, let's say that this suspect has a family and children and a job, but gets caught up in something, commits a minor crime, is it possible that if that police officer knows that that arrest for a minor crime will lead not just to punishment for the crime, but the breakup of that family and the deportation of the suspect to a country that they may have little contact with, where they may be even in great personal danger, is it possible that that might influence the police officer's judgment so that that arrest may not be made, when it should have been?
Yes, it's, you know, an officer's discretion is something that we value, we give them, we train the values of this organization, our core values, and we ask for their discretion. And a scheme that you've talked about, a set of circumstances could, could come to reality, yes.
So for all of those reasons, colleagues, I think it's important that police be allowed to make policing decisions based on public safety factors and not federal mandates like this. And so, thank you, Mr. Parks, I stand in strong support.
Councilmember Rosendorf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Folks, there's a lot of underlying conversation here about this, okay? The question is, are we the microcosm and the blender of the planet in Los Angeles, and do we accept all people as our brothers and sisters versus undocumented immigrants? Okay? There are some people who believe if you're an undocumented immigrant, get out now, under any circumstance, get out. Arizona seems to be moving in that direction. But since we in Los Angeles, we have six cameras here, why are these six cameras here? They're here because this is a hot-button issue. And the underlying issue is undocumented immigrants. Well, from a policing perspective, from the former chief and from people that understand the issue, if you're going to scare undocumented immigrants, if you're going to frighten them that the moment they step forward, they get fingerprinted, and they'll end up in a database with ICE, and that they could possibly be deported, will not solve crimes. It will impact us dramatically in our ability to police our city. One of the most amazing things, Daryl Gates, and I knew Daryl Gates and Warren Christopher and the riots that took place and all of that business, he had the brains to realize that if people hide in the shadow and a crime happens, we don't have justice. So what's a bigger issue, an undocumented immigrant being here or a violent crime? That's what it comes down to. It's as simple as that. I honestly believe that our immigration policy, we've been talking about it with our presidents and all this, we need a path to immigration. How many presidents have said that? And no one's done nothing, really, except talk, talk, talk. I don't care if it's this president, the last president, the other president. But we here on the ground, where we deal every day with issues, especially the police issues, the police are the ones who have said clearly, we need the ability to talk to potential witnesses. We need to solve crimes. And if this homeland security notion overtakes local violent crime, we're in deep trouble. So obviously, it makes a lot of sense for the federal government to understand that the crime we're talking about is more serious than maybe the crime of an undocumented immigrant, okay? In the context of undocumented immigrants. So if we want to deal with a violent crime, people should be able to feel free, they can talk to the authorities, and even if the person is being alleged, the person that caused the crime, well, we have a criminal justice system here, a due process system. But if that person has to do their fingerprints right then and there, you're not going to get any information in solving crimes. So it's a pragmatic, practical, and honest way of dealing with the issue of crime in our city. And Mr. Parks, having been the police chief, you know better than anybody else in the room, anybody else in the room, that you want to solve a crime. And if we want to solve crimes, we have to have this kind of integrity and appreciate everybody in our community and move in that direction. So thank you, Bernard, and everybody who participated.
Thank you. Councilmember Alarcon.
I just want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing this matter before our attention. This is a ridiculous policy, and I did all the comments of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker on the queue is Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, thanks for your positive comments. I would just like to thank all those individuals that came here. Would you just stand up at one time and let the public see you on Channel 35, came and gave up your time to be here to discuss this important issue, so thank you. Also, I'd like to thank Jessica from the National Day Labor's Organizing Network, and also Victor Noro from the National Center of Immigration Rights at UCLA, used to be with Charla. But I want to thank all of you for being here. I thank Jerry and Chief Moore, appreciated, and we'd ask for an eye vote on this item. As I mentioned earlier, every one of us has an immigrant community, we should not focus on one versus another, but we should make sure that the services within the city are blind to that issue of status. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks. Again, before we take a vote, for the sake of all the gardens in the city and homes that are kept clean, and the restaurants where all the fine food is cooked, and the number one industry in California, the agricultural industry in California, for the sake of all of those facts and the people and the future little valedictorians in our high schools throughout the city who are undocumented, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay, thank you. That measure passes. Forthwith, Mr. Parks? Yes, forthwith. Our next item, item 35.
Item, item 35. Number 35, we have some cards on number 35. Madam Clerk? Were you going to speak? Number 35, of folks that are here for number 35, Sherry Shankar? She waves. Sherry Shankar waves off. Judy Mancuso? Judy Mancuso? Is Judy Mancuso here? Okay, Judy.
Hi, good morning. My name is Judy Mancuso, and I'm the president of Social Compassion and Legislation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to passing laws that help reduce pet overpopulation and improve the lives of animals. This new proposal at its core simply states that cruel treatment of pets solely for profit has no place in the city of Los Angeles, especially when our shelters are already overflowing with loving companion animals. High-volume breeders are not only reprehensible because of their inhumane treatment of animals, but they are also large contributors to the pet overpopulation crisis. Their overbreeding of pets has the effect of flooding an already saturated system in Los Angeles with tens of thousands of additional dogs and cats. And with Los Angeles spending tens of millions of dollars per year to house abandoned animals, and with over tens of thousands of those pets being euthanized each year, this proposal will make a real difference by helping get those unfortunate pets out of shelters and into loving homes. So thank you, Councilman Corretts, for proposing this vital step, and to this compassionate council who has been a leader in California. Not only are you leaders in California, but across the United States on this issue, every time you pass one of these humane ordinances, it is copied throughout the United States and internationally. So I want to thank you all, and I'm happy to be with you today for this ordinance. Thank you.
Ed Buck. Mr. Ed Buck.
Good morning, I'm Ed Buck. I got involved in the animal rescue community because I got involved in the breeding community, Southern California Golden Retriever Rescue. One of the things that you may not see at first glance in this ordinance is that this ordinance will move responsible breeders to their position of preeminence where they belong. People will very often say, well, if I'm not going to get a dog from a pet store, where am I going to get them? You're going to get them from someone who's a responsible breeder. Because foreign corporations, over the last decade, two decades, have been dumping substandard product, if you will, into the Southern California market, it has been unfair competition with the responsible breeders. As a result, we see an increase in factory defects, if you will, overbred dogs that come with genetic defects that don't manifest themselves until a year, a year and a half, behavioral problems that are in many cases insurmountable because they lacked proper socialization. And when the buyer has buyer's remorse, he doesn't get to take the dog back and say to the Chinese corporation, the South Korean corporation, the Missouri corporation, I want my money back. He dumps the dog at LA Animal Services, the taxpayers pick up the tab, and unfortunately, many of those dogs are euthanized as a result. So think of this proposition not just as the ban, but the promotion of, once again, responsible local breeders. Thank you.
Melissa Moroff. Melissa Moroff, followed by Stephanie Martin.
Yes, my name is Melissa Moroff, I'm with a group, a group called Citizens Against Puppy Mills. From doing outreach and speaking with pet store shoppers, I can say with certainty, I've never met anyone in favor of puppy mills. They were either uneducated about them or believed the store owners who told them the dogs they sell were acquired from quality, private, or home breeders. The very nature of large-scale commercial breeding, in order to supply pet stores in which profit is the bottom line, makes for neither humane nor quality breeding. This bill would protect both consumers and animals, and be of no harm to ethical breeders. It will also serve to educate those still in the dark about the pet store-puppy-kitten-mill connection, as well as deter substandard breeders who will not stop unless laws are in place. We owe it to the animals that we've domesticated, who thrive on human interaction and socialization, not to condemn them to unnatural lives in cages as breeding machines. Commercial breeding of family pets has no place in a humane society. And to those who would say that a law of this nature, a ban of this nature, would violate their constitutional rights, I say, there's nothing in the Constitution that allows animal abuse or compounding pet overpopulation, and nor is it a right. Thank you.
Stephanie Martin.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Martin. I am president and one of the founders of Southern California Golden Retriever Rescue. We are mere three years old, we have saved over 1,100 dogs. These are golden retrievers. These are, we're not even talking about the pit bulls. These dogs that people are buying from the puppy mills are substandard, we spend about $160,000 a year on surgeries that are needed by these dogs. A reputable breeder will not sell a dog in a retail store. PetSmart, Kahoots, Petco, all make a very nice living in support of animal, well-loved animals, without selling animals in there. This would put some of our dogs out of the shelters into these stores, they have already been vet-checked, they've already been socialized, these would be helping our people, our constituents, and saving many lives. Thank you.
Elizabeth Oerich.
Good morning, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Oerich, I'm a third-generation native of Los Angeles and the national manager for puppy mill initiatives for Best Friends Animal Society. Best Friends supports a ban on the retail sale of dogs and cats in Los Angeles. Puppy mills are an enormous problem in this country. These mills, which supply over 90% of US pet stores, including those of Los Angeles, are cruel and inhumane facilities in which profit and maximum productivity take priority over the welfare of the animals. Because the goal is to make a profit, mill owners must cut corners in order to keep expenses low and profits high. For the unsuspecting consumer, this frequently results in the purchase of a pet facing an array of immediate veterinary problems or harboring genetic diseases that surface down the line. This creates a financial burden on the consumer and results in many of these animals being surrendered to our already overcrowded shelters. It makes no sense to continue manufacturing, importing, and selling dogs and cats in LA when so many are being killed at taxpayer expense for lack of space. Public education has been effective, but until we take the initiative to limit the supply of animals coming from these commercial facilities, there could be no hope of preventing these unnecessary deaths. Pet stores that obtain their animals from commercial breeding facilities are not an asset to our community. In fact, they could be part of the solution rather than the problem, simply by either stopping pet sales altogether and focusing on other profitable components such as grooming, daycare, or pet supplies, or by changing to a business model that offers products, services, and space for shelters and animal rescue organizations to adopt out animals in their stores. Best Friends has partnered with several of the pet stores that have transitioned from selling puppy mill dogs to offering only rescue pets for adoption, and we have found this humane model to be both viable and embraced by the communities in which these stores are located. Thus, a ban on the retail sale of pets would not preclude pet stores from staying in business and would in fact alleviate a significant burden on shelters and taxpayers by increasing pet adoptions. We applaud the city of LA for taking a compassionate, common sense initiative to addressing this crisis in our community, and we look forward to working with you on a fair, meaningful, and impactful ordinance that will make sense for our community.
Thank you. Patty Shankar? Patty Shankar?
Patty Shanker.
Shanker.
Shanker. Good morning, city council. Councilman Paul Corretts and Tony Cardenas have given our community a wonderful opportunity today. today in introducing this humane piece to address the problem of commercial breeding facilities, commonly known as puppy mills. The time has come, and cities and states throughout our country are passing laws to regulate this inhumane and heartbreaking mass production of pets. Here are just a few of the reasons to support this, and I am only talking about the dogs. First, American puppy mills produce an estimated four million puppies every year. This number is almost equal to the number of dogs that are euthanized in shelters every year when they are not adopted. Secondly, due to the intolerable conditions for and the careless breeding of these mother dogs and puppies, unsuspecting consumers are often buying sick puppies and incur expensive veterinary bills trying to treat the health problems, often only to euthanize them in the end. That’s why so many states have passed the puppy-lemon laws, in order to attempt to hold the breeders and sellers responsible. Thirdly, the USDA, which oversees these facilities, admits to a deficient and problematic record in the inspection of these dog breeding facilities. The truth is, these facilities are always found, always found, in violation of the USDA’s requirements, and our City of Angels has no business supporting them. Last, but most important to know, virtually all puppies sold in pet stores come from puppy mill breeders. I just participated in two legal puppy mill busts in Tennessee and Texas, and I have to say, these places must be banned. The small dogs were living, found living in their own waste, some stuck to the cages due to their matted fur, and a few living among dead ones. Let me remind you that this has nothing to do with individual licensed breeders. This is about commercial breeding facilities where our pets are seen as money-making-
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Sherry Shankar? And Sherry Shankar is our final speaker. And we understand you were out of the room, but now you’re back. Welcome.
I had important business to attend to.
I know, I know.
Good morning. I’m here to voice my support for the motion to ban the sale of mill-breed animals. The Los Angeles City Council has demonstrated time and time again your compassion and consideration for the animals. The animals can’t speak for themselves, so we must be their voice. The sale of mill-bred animals in pet stores perpetuates the miserable business of puppy mills. This motion will help Los Angeles become an even more humane city for our pets. Thank you. Thank you for considering this motion.
Thank you very much. That’s our public speaker, and now we’ll go to Councilor Paul Corretts, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this measure is a win-win for the city of Los Angeles. It’ll help us create a more humane Los Angeles, it’ll help us reduce our pet overpopulation problem, and it’ll save us a significant amount of money that that causes us, in terms of what we have to do to house a lot of extra animals in our shelters. A lot of people buy animals at pet stores that sell puppy mill animals without knowing it and without knowing the ramifications. I did that around twenty years ago. I’m certainly as animal-friendly as anybody else, but I didn’t know any better. I bought a purebred Bichon at a pet store. It had the typical problems. It was a great dog, but it had medical problems when we got it that had to be corrected by surgery. This is frequently the case because these animals are inbred and raised in terrible conditions, and that results in medical problems, behavioral problems, and a number of other problems when they’re received. Often, that leads to those animals winding up in our animal shelters. This measure, I think, can do a lot to both break the chain to puppy mills in the Midwest, where my dog was from, where the parents of these puppies and kittens are raised in horrible conditions that were already described, and also lead to a reduced number of animals in our shelters, which will save us money and reduce the very large percent that wind up being euthanized in our shelters currently. What this motion does is it asks for the establishment of a ban on commercial mill-bred animals within the city limits. It creates a program whereby L.A. Animal Services can work with licensed pet stores to make shelter animals available for adoption at pet stores on a regular or periodic basis. It creates a program where pet stores are identified as excelling in meeting our rigorous humane standards, and it prohibits the establishment or operation of animal mills in the city of Los Angeles’ boundaries. And we’re asking the Department of Animal Services, the CLA, the city attorney, and the LAPD to study and make recommendations on these proposals. In addition to the members of the public that you’ve heard, Animal Services Director Brenda Barnett is also available if you have any questions, and I ask your eye vote.
Thank you. And our next speaker, Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Corretts, for putting together this comprehensive motion. Very proud and glad to second this motion and continue to make sure that Los Angeles leads the way in setting the standard in this country on what it is to work toward, honestly work toward, becoming a no-kill city, and this is going to be a big part of it. This motion will continue to help us protect our animals within our city. This motion also is calling for regulation of puppy mills, which is a step in the right direction. In order to bring Los Angeles closer to becoming a no-kill city, there needs to be, first of all, greater ownership responsibility to ensure that pets are spayed and neutered, of which Councilmember Alarcon led that fight, and I was glad to co-author that as well. Spaying and neutering is a big component of that, and cooperation is a big component. Also, the encouragement of adoption of dogs and cats from our pet shelters is a big, big step in the right direction. One of the things that people need to understand is, why would we need to have dogs and cats imported into pet stores here in the city of Los Angeles, when even though we have been aggressively curtailing the number of euthanized pets that end up in our shelters, we’re still at about nineteen thousand? So, when we pass this, when we actually start to implement it, we are going to start the ball rolling so that we will reduce it from nineteen thousand to twelve thousand to ten thousand to five thousand, and eventually, we can all celebrate the day when we are not euthanizing animals in the city of Los Angeles. The regulation of breeders and third-party pet sellers is something that’s really important as well. We’re talking about lives here. We’re not just talking about somebody selling widgets, we’re not talking about somebody owning a little candy store, we’re talking about lives, we’re talking about mammals, we’re talking about beings, and the irresponsibility of enticing people to buy those animals after they have illegitimately raised those animals, if you want to call it raising them. They make sure that they’re born, they put them in conditions that are inhumane, they cause them issues that will perhaps affect them for the rest of their lives. Those are the kinds of things that require us to pass this motion. Those are the kinds of things that we need to make sure that we go through, not the motions of, but that we actually follow through with responsible ordinances in this city, and then follow through with making sure that we hold ourselves as government accountable, and the people accountable, and businesses accountable. So, it’s really important for us to understand that this is an effort that’s ongoing, it’s something that we’ve made tremendous strides in this city, but make no mistake about it, we have a long, long way to go, and this motion is a giant step in the right direction. So, once again, thank you, Councilmember Corretts, for introducing this motion, and I want to thank my colleagues for the years, the recent years of tremendous efforts that we have passed motions and supported our department in making sure that they can do a better and better job in saving lives in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Rosendahl?
Yep, I think I’ll bark or I’ll meow. Come on up, Brenda, I want to hear from you. Brenda, as we all know, is an incredible lady and a terrific manager of the department. Tell us what we’re doing here today. Explain to me why this is a good idea.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you both, Councilmember Corretts and Cardenas, for introducing and seconding this, and you for asking the question, Councilmember. You know, we’re not only protecting the animals, but we’re protecting the people in the community, the people who don’t know that when they go into a pet store, they are paying hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars for an animal that is likely to be sick, have genetic defects, and may not even live two or three weeks when they get at home. So, I see it as twofold. We’re protecting our shelters from having animals come in, but we’re also protecting an unsuspecting community from buying these kind of companions.
And also, from the animal perspective, not that I can get in their skins too much, but it’s absolutely outrageous to create these kinds of animals in that kind of way that suffer as well.
Well, the conditions that they’re raised in are usually very inhumane. They’re just jammed in, their breeding animals are used only for breeding, they’re kept in little boxes, they live, sleep, eat in their own excrement, and all they are are puppy-producing machines. It’s totally inhumane.
Yeah, and that inhumane is where I’m coming from. We’re all connected. We’re connected with the animals, too, you know? And those who have animals know the value they have to us in helping us exist in this society that we live in. And I wish everybody had a dog, or a cat, or a rabbit, or a finch, or a canary, and they could connect and realize that these animals are loving and giving and supportive right out the gate, and it can help us with the human elements that sometimes are not consistently decent to each other. So, in respect to the animals and respect to those who appreciate them the way the community just does, obviously, an eye vote makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Corretts.
When we speak of these mills, how many are we talking about? Do we have an understanding, more or less? What are we dealing with?
Well, I think we don’t know, we don’t know how many puppy mills there really are because a lot of them fly under the radar, they’re illegal operations. For example, here, I don’t know how many puppy mills there are in Los Angeles City, but I understand there are some, and we continually try to work underground to try to bust them, if you will. What happens is, they’re very clever, it’s an illegal, inhumane business, and they have their little lookouts, and they will move from house to house to house and move their animals with them and stay one step ahead of law enforcement. So, to tell you how many there are, I don’t know. We can look more at the number of animals that are killed in the city or killed in the country.
Is there a way to, I’m kind of stretching here, but is there a way to orientate our building and safety inspectors and our city family when they go to the residential areas? What to look for? Is there any way of creating those kinds of cues, or is it too difficult?
Well, I think that’s a good question, and I think that’s something we might want to explore with the water department, with, you know, Public Works and the water, because they do, we do get their lists, and we’re working with them to try to be able to coordinate their list with our dog licensing list, so that’s a good thing for us to explore, I think.
The reason why I ask is I have seen us propose policies, they’re very well-written, very well-intended, but enforcement is the key.
Right.
And so, how you move on, so we can ban it, but now, how do we enforce it? And what mechanisms are there in place, what toolbox we need to create? And perhaps that’s something we need to drill down a little bit more in seeing how we can actually enforce this, so I appreciate your insight.
Thank you.
Our final speaker, Mr. Corretts.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Ms. Barnett, for your great leadership so far and your support of this measure. I think this will be a measure that we will be able to successfully enforce. I know we have a graduating class of reserve officers, and we have a growing number of volunteers throughout the city, and hopefully, they can help implement this and enforce it. I think this should be a no-brainer for the council. It’s a chance for us to continue to move our city in a more humane direction and to cut costs at the same time. It’s an absolute win-win situation for the city, and I ask for an eye vote.
Well, there we go. Time for a vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes, you got it? Jump for joy, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Council has motions for post and referral.
Post and referred.
There is an excuse in the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to leave at 11:30 on Friday, June 10th, for city business. A motion is required.
Motion by Mr. Rosendahl, it’s approved. It’s a birthday. Who’s the birthday person today? Matt Hale? Where is Matt Hale? Matt Hale, birthday? Mr. Corretts has a birthday man in his office. Happy birthday. How about announcements? Do we have announcements, colleagues? See no announcements? Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Parks for announcements?
I just want to thank all my colleagues around the horseshoe for your participation last Friday in the first Gay Heritage Month. Your heartfelt comments that you made, standing up one by one, was incredibly received by my brothers and sisters, the gay, lesbian, transgender, transsexual, bisexual, the whole community was so pleased. Since Friday, I’ve gotten more phone calls and more interactions with my brothers and sisters about your comments, and I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your generous love and appreciation, that we’re all God’s children, and that human rights and civil rights matter to everyone. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, this morning, I was late because you are celebrating all the improvements in Lincoln Park, and I just want to take a moment to thank the city family and the departments, the BOE, Bureau of Engineering, the Architectural Division, Department of General Services, Construction Forces, Department of Wreck and Parks, Department of Water and Power, and the voters for supporting Proposition 40 and Proposition K. With those funds, you brought back one of the locations, the first L.A. Zoo, which is Lincoln Park. You brought back its basketball courts, irrigation system, its gateway that was the original entry to the L.A. Zoo back in the turn of the century, and again, a skateboard park, and it couldn’t happen without the participation and hard work of our city family. I know we’re under a lot of pressure with furloughs and budget cuts, but they were able to step up and make this happen on behalf of Lincoln Heights. The Lincoln Heights folks, I thank them for their hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues and to the public, we have three very important meetings coming up. First of all, redistricting Thursday, June 9th, 5:30 to 8:30 at the Puente Learning Center, 10,000 Southwestern Avenue, talk about redistricting in the city of L.A. and the state of California. Also, on that same day, Thursday, June 9th, starting at 4 o’clock, the L.A. DWP is holding its 2011 Business Development Expo, where they will educate the public on how they could take advantage of over a billion dollars in contracting awarded by DWP. And then finally, DWP will be holding a variety of meetings regarding gaining community input about the 2011 Water and Power Rate Process, and in the Eighth District, that meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 21st, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the California African-American Museum in Exposition Park.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements, colleagues? See none? adjourned motions? Yes, we have adjourned motions. Please stand in the chambers. Everyone, please stand for adjourned motions. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I think we’re probably going to want to have all members on this one. This is, with sadness, we adjourn in the memory of Joe Mozingo. He passed away Monday, May 23rd, at the age of seventy, and he was born on May 11th, 1941, due to complications from diabetes. Joe was born in Bloomington, Illinois, and grew up in Hollywood and Studio City. Joe was a former ITA Assistant General Manager, but started his career with the city in 1980 as a programmer analyst. He quickly was promoted and eventually became the General Manager for the Information Technology Agency, and Joe retired on September 10th, 2002. He developed a love of photography, and throughout his life, traveled up and down the coast of California shooting pictures of whalers, shacks, and foggy cypress groves. In his time off, he entertained friends and family at Pismo Beach and points north of Pismo Beach in a series of ever-larger motorhomes. Joe retired to Carlsbad to be near his brother and wife, Dave and Jeannie, and lived his final years as happy as he had ever been. Joe Mozingo was enjoying retirement after a very successful career with the Information Technology Agency, and he was loved by all people who worked with and knew him. He was a very caring individual and always willing to help out any way he could. Joe will be missed by all who knew him. Joe Mozingo is survived and leaves behind a brother and a sister-in-law and a nephew.
All members, all members, and Joe. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I’d like us to adjourn today in the memory of Father Art Bartlett, who died on Saturday at the age of ninety-one. Father Art was a longtime clergyman at St. Peter’s Episcopal Church on Ninth Street in San Pedro. He helped guide thousands of faithful on their life journeys. It didn’t matter if you were homeless, addicted to drugs, or a lonely sailor in town for a few days, Father Art was there to lend a hand. He was born on October 25th, 1919, in Faversham, a small town in southern England, to a seed-faring family on his father’s side and to Scottish weavers- family on his father's side and to Scottish weavers on his mother's side. His family came to San Pedro during the post-war migration in 1923, and his aunt, a concert pianist in Los Angeles, convinced Bartlett's father, a steam engineer, that he should come to work in the shipyards. Father Art began working at age eight when he sold Liberty Magazine aboard the ships. Drafted during World War II, became a gunner with the Army Air Corps, his military career helped him find his calling. He joined St. Peter's in 1955 and began volunteering at the Siemens Church Institute. He helped found the Beacon House, a residential recovery program for alcoholics and addicts. He was the director of the Episcopal Diocese Siemens Church Institute of Los Angeles, which provides aid to those working in the maritime industry. He once ran a one-man campaign to collect socks to help keep the feet of the homeless dry and warm during the winter. Father Art served as a harbor commissioner, supported local libraries, worked to preserve the San Pedro Lighthouse, volunteered at the Assistant League, and found time to join the Elks Club, and helped change the rules to allow women to become members. He was active in San Pedro Bay Historical Society. He was preceded in death by his wife of more than 50 years, Frances, and two of his three children. In addition to his son, Bob, Bartlett is survived by six grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. His funeral will be private, but we're working right now on a public ceremony in the future. He was a great, great man.
Second, Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd also like us to adjourn in the memory of Marie Eleanor Melendez, who passed away on June 1st. She was 83. Marie was born in 1927 and grew up in Boyle Heights. She graduated from Theodore Roosevelt High School, and in 1946, she married Robert Melendez, after he was discharged from the Navy. They married in 1948 and lived in a temporary housing project in Griffith Park for veterans returning to southern California following the end of World War II. In 1952, they purchased a home in the Arlita community of San Fernando Valley, where they started a family and where they raised their 11 children, Paula, Robert, Kathy, Rod, Ken, Marie, Len, Tom, John, Greg, and Annie. Marie Melendez was a woman of many talents. In 1970, she was hired by the County of Los Angeles Courts as a deputy clerk I. She continued to work her way up in court, in the court system, and retired in 1992 as a deputy clerk IV. Marie did an excellent job of raising her family and instilling a great sense of confidence and self in each of them. This is seen in her son, my friend, Ken Melendez, who is a respected leader in the communities of Wilmington and Harbor City, and who works tirelessly for the benefit of the two communities he loves. A gathering of friends and family will be held today at Rice Mortuary Chapel in Torrance. Funeral services will be on Wednesday, June 8th, and the burial will take place at San Fernando Mission Cemetery in Mission Hills this Thursday. Our deepest sympathy goes to Ken and his wife, Letty, and the whole family.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LeBones?
Robert Jackson, a great resident in North Hollywood, 85 years old, short bout with cancer, lived a great life, World War II veteran in the aviation field, also served on the Van Nuys Airport Citizen Advisory Committee. He was preceded in death by his wife for many years, Marilyn Jackson. We ask, we adjourn in Robert Roy Jackson. In addition, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Cecilia Sally Kondoffer, who was a Las Feliz resident, wonderful, involved in many good programs, very supportive and philanthropy for many projects in the community. She survived by her sons, two sons, grandmother of three and great-grandmother of eight, Cecilia Sally Kondoffer. Lastly, I ask, we adjourn in memory of Hudson Heflin, who survived by his daughter Monica, his son Reginald, and his son Michael. This is Mike Haynes' dad, Hudson Heflin, a great Air Force veteran as well, had diabetes, but lived a good life. As the son of a great future Hall of Famer, Mike Haynes, when he would watch his son play in the Coliseum, there was nothing like seeing a father's smile and his father's conversation after the game to his son. Hudson Heflin was a great man and a great father of Mike Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. LeBones. Seconded by Ms. Hahn. Any other journey motions, colleagues? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This concludes our meeting.